Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 26th, and I call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you're able and join us to make the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go on to adopt today's agenda, I just wanted to make a comment that if you do have questions or a comment during the meeting, to use the chat feature or actually prefer that you use the raise hand function if you're on Zoom and ask questions, but we do recognize that some people that their likes not be working on their computer, that I will have the moderator look at the chat function during the public comment time, but otherwise we will not be doing question and answer during other times except for the public hearing time, and we can look at that as well. I just want to make that notation. And then with that, move to adoption of the agenda. I just wanted to make one notation that on the proclamation, the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, it lists the Board of Supervisors, all three of us as chair. So just a change to, we'll just take chair off, so it's just sort of supervisors. And that is their motion to adopt the agenda with changes. So move to second. The movement in seconded, space off, I. Merkin, I. Kevin, I. Now's the time for public comment number one. The comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you are on Zoom, if you please use the raise hand function to unmute yourself, ask questions. If you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. Let's see, staff online and no one in here, so we will close public comment time. Next, we'll move on to consideration of a proclamation of October as domestic violence awareness month in Story County. This is the proclamation of October as domestic violence awareness in Story County, where as home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security, and for the most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically, for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas every nine seconds, a woman in the United States is assaulted by an intimate partner and whereas an average of three women are murdered by intimate partners in the United States every day, and a person experiencing strangulation in a relationship is seven times more likely to be murdered by their partner. And in according, and according to the American Psychological Association, the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%. And whereas according to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, primed out of breed, intimate partner violence, women accounted for 85% of the victims of intimate partner violence and men for approximately 15%. And whereas women and men are not the only targets, children, the elderly, family, pets, and responding law enforcement officers are counted among the victims. And whereas according to a study by Break the Silence 2006, witnessing violence is the strongest risk factor for transmitting violent behavior from one generation to the next.
Whereas according to the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence, approximately 23% LGBTQ men and 50% of LGBTQ women experience abuse at the hands of their intimate partners. And whereas domestic violence costs an estimated $8.3 billion annually in medical care, mental health services, and loss productivity on the job. Women, men, and children living with domestic violence suffer higher rates of physical injury, chronic problems, depression, PTSD, attempted suicide, substance abuse, behavior problems for children, and homelessness. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Story County Board of Supervisors will pay the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Story County, and urge our citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting those who are working toward its end. And I move the adoption of this proclamation.
Second. Kevin, I. Angel, I. Kevin, I. The proclamation is adopted. And I see attorney meeting. Since I didn't know if anyone wanted to make any comments. Just a thank you to the board. You're welcome. This is an important issue, and thank you for bringing it forward for our review. We have enough agency reports, consideration of minutes. We have the October 19th, 2021 minutes. Can I look at the? There was one, and I thought, oh, there it is. It's 20.
The last sentence on the upcoming agenda items, Kevin's state of American nest you plan are but applications may be moved. I think that should be meetings rather than applications.
She was talking about the applications. Yeah, yeah, I was, yeah. Yeah, when I, when the application potential upcoming agenda item, I said we do have a timeline, but we may be having applications coming too. Okay, yeah, okay, I just didn't understand. Okay, I'll second the motion. The move to seconded, space off, I. Merkin, I. Kevin, I. We haven't set a timeframe yet, so let's wait. Can I make that comment? Consideration of personnel action. I move approval of personnel action as just. The move in seconded, Merkin, I. Space off, I. Kevin, I. So consideration of planes. I move approval of planes presented. Second. The move in seconded, space off, I. Merkin, I. Kevin, I. Anyone wanting to think of consent agenda today? Proving it, yes. Second. The move in seconded, Merkin, I. Space off, I. Kevin, I. We are to public hearing, are correct? Yes, we are. So we have the second consideration ordinance under 297, amending chapter 86, District of President, chapter 85.08, W2 of the Story County Land Development Regulations of Story County Code of Order. Good morning, Andrea.
Yep, so I just have PowerPoint with one slide on it. Since this was approved on first consideration last Tuesday, our department has not received any public comments or concerns since public hearing last week. And barring any public comments here today, we would recommend alternative number one, which is in line with the planning zoning commission from October 6th. And that would be approving ordinance 297, amending chapter 86 and 85.08 on second consideration and waiving the third consideration. Other alternatives are on the screen to either approve but set third consideration, deny and set third consideration, or remand it back to staff for more information. So if you have any questions, since last week, I can take them or we can open it to public comments.
Any questions farther? I guess we'll open the public hearing. If anyone online would like to make comments, if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function. We'll wait just a few seconds, but no, I see the majority of your staff and reporter on there, but make sure. No one seems to be coming forward here, so we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion? I move approval of ordinance 297, amending chapter 86, District of President, chapter 85.08, definitions of Story County Land Development Regulations, Story County ordinance on second consideration and waiving third consideration. Second. The move in seconded, space off, I. Merkin, I. Kevin, I. Thank you very much. Department reports. Land development. Good morning, Amelia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, this is our third quarter report. We. Thanks. So we track permits as part of these quarterly reports. We haven't had as many this quarter as in past years, but we hadn't seen a lot at the beginning of the year, so things are starting to even out, which is probably good. I think with the previous two quarters, we've had 27 new dwellings this year, and that's, you know, a little behind. We usually see 30, 33, but still pretty high. And then they've been really high value dwellings, is what I wanted to point out, too. Usually we see dwellings being constructed in the $200,000 range on average, and these ones are in the $300,000 average, 350. And I, my guess is that, you know, loan prices are still pretty, the rates are pretty low still, but there are some extra construction costs still. Prices are still high, they're starting to come down. And so I think what we see is really high value homes being built. Next slide, please. So this is a map of where we've seen these permits. A lot near Huxley as well as North Ames, I'll point out. Next slide, please. And then we broke them down for just this quarter by type, which is really interesting because we had more solar permits than homes. And so Marcus did some digging into why. There's a solar energy tax credit that you can get up to 13% of your system as an income tax credit with the state of Iowa, and that ends at the end of the year, so they have to finish projects. So we've been seeing a lot of solar permits since the beginning of the year, but things are really increasing now because of that. Solar prices have gone down. We talked to one of the installers that does a lot of work in the county, and so we might still see more solar permits than usual, but this tax credit will likely have an effect since it's expiring.
As far as the end of this calendar?
Yes.
Yep. That was a castor, and I think it's most recent legislative session.
Yep, it was. There's still a federal tax credit, I think. And then the other interesting thing that the installer said was that there's now national solar installers working in Story County, and so they do advertising for solar, and that's driving business towards local companies as well. And so everybody's just getting more interest, so. Next slide. Development cases have been pretty normal. So these are ordinance subdivisions, conditional use permits, rezonings, that kind of, that kind of larger case, and we're about average, if not a little bit higher than in previous years. I think mainly we have had more ordinance amendments than in previous years, as I'm sure you've noted. Next slide. The conditional use permits, we saw, I know those go over board of adjustment, not you all, so just a summary of what they were for, an asphalt plant for a project on Highway 65, and a new daycare facility operated at Forest Town Church. We also had one annexation last quarter and property research where you look into, this is just an administrative thing that staff does, where we create a report on the potential to build a dwelling on a property that doesn't meet our minimum lot size. We research on if it's possible. We've seen fewer of those than in prior quarters, which is interesting because usually that's a precursor for when we're going to see a residential parcel subdivision or another division to create a new dwelling lot. But we have seen a lot of conceptual review meetings for other projects. So that might be a commercial rezoning request or a larger subdivision request, and those really haven't come through, but there's still a lot of interest in larger projects. And then an update on our work program. We're still plugging along on that. Ames Urban Fringe Plan, the overall amendment to it. It expires, as you all know, in July of next year. We were waiting on the 2040 plan to wrap up before we started work with Ames. I have a meeting with the Planning and Development Director for Ames on Thursday, and then I'll probably be reaching out for just any individual comments and bringing that letter we did last year back. Just, you know, there's been changes with the housing study, and just want to make sure that those priorities are still the priorities we should move forward with the staff. Construction, demolition, landfill. We have an interested property owner in a pretty good location on Highway 30 at the New interchange. And I think I just have a few more questions for the DNR about the site, and then Joby and I will be bringing that for direction in the next couple of weeks, because I think there's a potential for an accessory pole barn type for storage for other departments that could be on that site as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
So I'm excited about that. It took a while.
Thank you, tenacity.
So, yeah, hopefully that works out. And then, as you know, we've been doing chapter amendments to our entire code. We've done three so far that I would say were some of the bigger chapters or the ones needing a lot of work, especially home businesses. We have Chapter 85, which is definitions left, so that's going to come last because there's definitions in every chapter that need to be added. Chapter 87 is divisions, and we will, we just have a few changes to that chapter. Nothing major, but maybe on our next year's work program, we might recommend more of an overhaul to the types of subdivisions we allow. Chapter 88 is our general site planning standards, and we are pretty much done with that chapter except that it contains our natural resource protection standards, and that's a separate work program item. And I thought, you know, we could hold off on bringing that forward until we had the natural resources ordinance standards done. That was my plan, just because then we've had a lot of publication costs recently. I thought it'd be good to save money. And we went to, if you could go to the next slide. This next item, the natural resources areas mapping and the conservation design standards. The mapping's done, so that's showing where natural areas are. And the standards, we are in a good place on, we talked to County Conservation Board last night about what we're thinking. We've got a pretty good draft done, and I think we'll bring a preliminary draft to planning and zoning either November or December, and then do public outreach to everybody that has natural resources on their property about what that means after planning it's on it. Could you go to the previous slide? Then the only remaining chapter would be Chapter 90, which is unconditional use permits. And this chapter is a lot.
It's the best for last.
Yeah. We've actually talked to our Board of Adjustment about notification distances for these different uses, and that's what we're really wrestling with as staff right now. So is a quarter mile notification distance sufficient for a shooting range? Do we have sufficient supplemental standards for a shooting range or a mineral extraction use? And that has taken a lot of time. So that's the update there. Thanks. And then we have two new interns. So Trey is a senior at Iowa State, Trey Meyer. He works in the afternoons on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Friday mornings. And then Emily Rizovic was our old intern and rejoined us after taking a different summer internship, and she's working on, in the mornings. And so Emily is working on the public outreach toolkit. She's looking at notification distances, use of, you know, a current project page or other social media, like what kinds of outreach we should do for different types of development cases. And then Trey is looking at minimum levels of service. So what that is, is density maximums and minimums for zoning districts. Looking at when we have a new development proposed, how far should it be from a fire station? Should it be on a paved road? Should we prohibit development on a Level B road? Those kinds of things. Should we be encouraging regional wastewater systems in certain areas? So Trey is working on that. And then accessory dwelling units was our last work program item that was high priority, and we're going to need to delay that because everything else is still, we're still working on it, so maybe next year. I know there's a lot of interest from the public on accessory dwelling units, but we need to do a lot more research on how a building code plays into that. And we just don't have the time right now.
This is something, that's not something you can brush.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've got a lot of things that you've gotten done and a lot of things you're working on, so I agree with some of this. So I think that the accessory dwelling units, waiting here, some of those other things have to be in place.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I want to just commend you on the discussion with Conservation Board last night. That was, yeah, they ran a while, that was a pretty lengthy discussion, but that was a big discussion, and I think you got a lot of support there and a lot of resources that were achieved.
Yeah.
So I feel really good about that and how that fits with some of the ordinance changes as well.
Yeah, thank you. That was a really helpful discussion.
The other thing I might note is that me and I had an appointment a few months ago to go talk to Boone County Supervisors, just to answer any questions they might have about participation in the Urban Fringe Agreement, because they were initially listed as being a party, but they didn't sign on when it first came out about. But with the 2040 plan going into Boone County, we thought maybe they'd want to talk about that again. So they had canceled it before, but I'm going to be calling. We've got some dates, and I'm going to be calling later today or first thing tomorrow and try to get on their agenda so we can just discuss that. I know the city of Kelly at some point said they would be very interested in joining this time as well.
I think Ames has reached out to Kelly. I think so. I will double check.
Why don't you ask the counterpart?
Yeah.
But I know that.
I appreciate.
The mayor says, well, that he won't get involved, because they, it was also that Southwest.
Yeah, but I appreciate you helping reach out to Boone County, I think, as another county in the fringe plan.
We think it, I think it would be good.
Yeah, we can offer some insights on why it's important.
That's what they, then maybe, yeah, that's what they need to hear that intuition.
Yeah. Other questions?
So the, I see that there's 10 accessory structure permits. Is that, is that typical or is that unusual?
That's normal. That's garages, pole barns. Yeah, we usually see the most of those.
Okay, okay. That's my, that's my question. I can't believe we're already in the third, well, third quarter.
It's almost done.
Yeah, I feel like I've leaked and went from January to today. Yeah, I'd say we're in fourth quarter.
Yeah, we are. You're reporting third quarter, but fourth quarter is almost done.
First month of fourth quarter.
I did have one other question, and I should notice, I'm going to say, oh, duh. What are 911 permits?
Oh, that's new addresses. Oh, so those should coincide about with the number of new dwellings we got.
Sure.
Sometimes people do them before, though, so if it's different, that's why.
So you're, yes, it's kind of two areas of the county where most of the residential.
Yes, yeah. Huxley is really thrilling.
They are. Have a demolitions.
So demolitions now go through environmental help, but we use the same tracking software. So that's why they pop up on my map. So I'm not really, I can't answer the specific questions.
That's fine. I didn't ever see that.
Yeah. They check for wells, septic, that the holes appropriately filled in, asbestos is appropriately treated. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a work session on Thursday, and let's do something that will be on view. We have an upcoming work session on Thursday, our, our work session. So that will probably, I don't know, the matrix that will materialize or potentially move towards the board, next board agenda. Did that, not when we get to the public comment there. Anything else there? We've got our Story County Economic Development meeting this week, and then we're going to be talking about the housing study. So those, I think there will be things coming from those.
Right, right, I agree.
Okay, I will open up for our public forum number two, comments on the public items. Not on this agenda, the board may not take action on the comments due to requirements of both the meeting slot, but may do so in the future. And I see that they be here to have a comment or question, so that.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
I won't take very much of your time, but next week I'm going to put on the agenda. I know I sent you probably way more information last Friday. I mean, I know there's been some communication that stemmed back November of last year about a possible legislative change with Iowa County Recorders Association, and that amendment did, or that legislation did pass. So I'll be bringing forth an amendment and a resolution for your consideration that really just takes the Iowa County Recorders Association out of the loop to have to enter into any kind of contract with the Board of Supervisors. So this deals with our statewide Iowa land records portal, and it's very, it's, it's very confusing if you don't deal with Iowa land records, but if I, if you have any questions, certainly reach out to me. And I just wanted to let you know that it's coming next week.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Any other comment? I'm not saying any, but we'll close public forum number two. I need some supervisors. Let's see, we've got three of the virtual fly-ins this chamber and our delegation in Congress. Representative Senator, President today. Representative Dean Stritch tomorrow. Senator Ernst on Thursday. I have an AMPO meeting at six o'clock tonight, Ames City Council Chambers. I think that's going to be a brief one, but maybe not. And then tomorrow, we have Story County Economic Development Group with Huxley, correct? Our ARPA meeting Thursday morning to look at our scoring matrix. And Friday, Ames is opening South Grand Avenue. Pretty much what I'm seeing for the rest of the week. The discussion on reentry and transit driver, Story County on Monday, is that heard of? So organizer Julia Costa.
Yeah. 11:00 a.m.
Yeah. Yeah, one of us. We have Recorders' recognition this afternoon and Community Services recognition Thursday and Saturday, too. On this, the Thursday. But then we were, I will be. Today, I have a cousin trust meeting this afternoon. Some, a lot of the same events that just mentioned up in the house as well. Our CCJ board meeting tomorrow evening, first meeting of the county's advisory. Our CCJ board meeting tomorrow evening, first meeting of the Hope County's advisory board, NACO board that I'm on is tomorrow afternoon at one. CAF board meeting Thursday evening. I did meet with a couple folks from, well, maybe one of voters on Saturday who are heading up transportation, rural transportation study. And had a really good conversation with them. They were pleasantly surprised at all of the resources and different organizations that are also working on transportation. But one of the things we talked about was the challenge during COVID of really getting out into rural areas and, and talking to folks about what, what their real, their true needs are. And so I know they're interested in doing that. I just wanted to talk with you guys and let you know that I'm also interested in, you know, having some of those conversations. They asked if they could say that they're working with the county on it to gather information. And I said, you know, I really need to bring that to the board. I, I would like to participate, but I would hate for it to be presented as if the county is doing a study or doing any type of information gathering, which they, they've all totally understood. But I, I am interested in, in participating in some of those conversations. So I just wanted to bring that out at a meeting and get your thoughts and.
Well, I think you could participate as long as you simply say, these are my individual thoughts. And then, you know, this, I'm not representing the board of supervisors.
Yeah, I think I've meant the thing. Yes, and they participated in some of the committees that I've been on transportation wise, I would concur. We don't want to, want the, the board.
Right.
Initiative, while we all threw me interested in that, your participation is.
Right.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, and that's why I wanted to talk about it here, so that that was discussed probably and made very clear here. And then I'll continue to make that clear.
Always good to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that's.
Do you have a housing action plan work session on our schedule for next Monday as well?
Monday, yeah. Monday afternoon.
I feel like it's just really busy weeks right now.
Yeah.
Oh, we had that one slow week.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah, there's just webinars all over the place that I signed up for, so that might be a little cross eyed. Yes, I'm going to try to zoom into the NACO ARPA meeting this afternoon, which I missed yesterday because, you know, they, they do their UT time and then you convert it to Eastern time and then getting into Central time, I messed up the day. So I got it on the calendar today for one act rock. Also have the reporters today in the virtual fly-in. I may miss the economic development meeting tomorrow because ISAC has, there, our work group has a ARPA work meeting tomorrow. And so, I know the agenda yesterday, I was going to talk a little bit more, but I may miss that tomorrow, so I could participate in that. I have, same with the community service on Thursday. I have a further meeting Thursday morning as well and CICF on Thursday afternoon. That'll be out on Friday. And then Monday I do have on the calendar the reentry to the transit in the housing action plan work session. So busy. This week. Switch your, sorry, I'm not on Friday. Okay. My mother is 98 today, so we're celebrating her birthday Friday. With that, there's no other updates. Is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa section 21.5 dash one? Close session. Then the infected market, they go, I, seven five.